Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I call to order the informational meeting of the city council. It is May 11th, 2021. Welcome to those watching on TV online and those here in person. Since it looks like we have everybody here but potentially one, I'm just going to ask, Councilor Erickson, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome. So everyone is in attendance. We're going to move on to committee and commission reports. First up, Tutt Hill House Resource Group, Councilor Member Brecky.
Thank you. Yes, the Tutt Hill House Resource Group did meet this week, and we met out at the Tutt Hill House. It's not being used this year because of the upcoming construction, so we were free to meet out there and look things over. Things continue to go well. The fundraising group gave us support, and they have recently received a $25,000 donation plus a $10,000 donation, and an individual who would like to remain anonymous, at least at this point, has agreed to provide all of the materials for the exterior of the building. So things are moving well, moving very well. We're about, they're about two-thirds way to their full goal at this point, so they do have enough funds to do the exterior, which was the original reason for meeting. Everything else, the interior, opening up the second floor, enhancing the gardens, that was all, you know, trying to put together a full, a complete plan and a complete picture. So they do have enough fund at this time to actually start the exterior work, and they're working with the engineers, construction engineers, and they, we have a contractor who's going to, two contractors, actually, one who's going to be in charge of the exterior, one's going to be in charge of the interior. So things continue to move forward, and it's been, it's a very, a very exciting group to work with. They've got a lot, very high energy. And again, things, things continue to look good on that front, so thank you for your support.
Great. Good progress. Next up, Sioux Land Heritage Museum Board, Councilmember Starr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things, you know, it's business as usual. They're starting to get back at the, the old courthouse in the, the systems library, or the system with the number of tours, presentations, and things that are going on. One of the things that's back at it for this summer that I think all of us would find enjoyable, and I keep saying I'm going to do it every year, is they have about 10 different dates where you can go inside the quarry at concrete materials, and they'll take you to the bottom. I knew Director Cotter's eyes would light up when we brought that part of it up, but it's, you know, our community since the 1800s has had a long history of the quarrying business in our area as part of building and construction, and it's a, it's a great tour to be part of. So I think if there would still be some openings, they opened last Tuesday, were the first dates. The other thing that was of note at the board meeting this last week was that they continue to review the holdings of the museum. So the number of things, there was a list of about five pages front and back that no longer meet the museum quality exhibit, or donations and things that fit what's going on, so of what becomes historical. And the one that made the list for me, there were a, a number of undergarments through the years that are no longer part of the collection, or there were more than they expected, and I don't know if, a number of years ago that they had gone through a display of undergarments starting in the early 1800s all the way through today, and, and as you know, they've probably gotten smaller over time, so, but they were still taking room that there isn't as they review the collection materials. So that was basically it, the normal financials and everything else. So, thanks.
Thank you. That brings us to our next item, council remarks. Anyone with council remarks today? Counselor Jensen, and then we'll go to Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a great roundtable this morning on housing. Counselor Sale, Counselor Erickson, and myself joined the Realtor Association to talk about housing and to start a conversation on the Housing Fund, which was presented to us last week, and kind of get some great ideas. So next, Thursday, the 20th, at 7:30 a.m. to 9:00, we're going to invite everyone to come to Hy-Vee on 37th and Minnesota to continue the conversation. We had a lot of people show up today, and you guys are all invited to that as well as the public. We'd love you to be there, because it's going to be a team effort to get to 7,000 houses in, in five years. And we're gonna, we're gonna intend to get there and, you know, look for places where we can be helpful and places where we can step out of the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kylie.
Thank you very much. I've got a couple of items. One, it was my honor to accept the Industrial Partner Award from Southeast Technical College this past Friday during their graduation. That, as you all know, we have partnered with Southeast Technical College for the last three years and hopefully going on for four and more in the future. And so that award was given to the, to the city for our contributions to their efforts dealing with workforce and workforce-related housing. So thank you to Southeast Technical College for that recognition. Also, I'd just like to announce that this Thursday, the 13th, at 1:00 p.m., the PFC Kirby John Doherty Memorial Bridge Dedication will take place, and you can meet, it's the 41st Street Bridge over the Sioux River, right next to O'Gorman, and they'll just be meeting in the O'Gorman-Greenway area near, near the bridge. So I just wanted, as you all recall, a month or two ago, we unanimously passed that resolution to name the bridge after PFC Kirby John Doherty, who lost his life during the Vietnam War. And then one other reminder, all of you have received invitations to attend the State Veteran Cemetery Ribbon Cutting on Memorial Day, the 31st, at 2:00 p.m. And they will be shuttling people from the alliance, because parking is somewhat limited there on the grounds. That's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Others with council remarks today? Seeing none, we're going to move on to presentations. First up is Curbside Collection. That's going to be presented by Mark Cotter, our Director of Public Works, and it looks like his team. Welcome.
All right. Well, thank you for having us. I have Donnie Kiper, Andy Berg, Holly Meyer, and Troy Lambert are here with the city, and we have a number of haulers here. And I know we're only on your agenda for 15 minutes, so we'll get through our slides quickly. And then really, our goals are today is to first thank you for the recognition of all the changes that COVID brought. One of them, solid waste collection is one of the most important utilities we have in a modern city. You were very responsive to the request of the industry to allow temporarily, allow curbside collection, which went from April of 2020 to March of 2021. And then one of the commitments we made was to come back, really share some of the lessons learned that we have, give you some industry feedback that we had after the reflection of a year. And then probably most important is to just get some of your preferences, and then we'll take those preferences to the Solid Waste Planning Board, work through those to the best we can, and then ultimately bring a package back before you. One of the things that we would want you to do a takeaway on is regardless of preferences and dialogues, I know some people are very passionate about this, we're going to have to come to that sort of best balance that we can. Toward the end of this, we can certainly give you a, a nod to where we think that we should start to lean toward for trying to, just like anything, there's always room for improvement. There's room for improvement with solid waste collection as well, and see if any of that guides this discussion. But one of the things that you'll see is if you look at the ordinance for both MSW, yard waste, and recycling, it's clear in the ordinance for recycling and yard waste that on the day of collection, a homeowner can bring their can out somewhere other than curbside, which is interpreted could be somewhere on the driveway. It's not that clear in the MSW section, and so we know regardless, we really want to do a cleanup of the ordinance to make that part clear for not only the customers but also the hauling community. So with that, this first slide just really takes you through the various steps that came from the requests from the haulers in anticipation of a labor shortage, the time in April of 2020 when we brought forward the temporary emergency ordinance, and then ultimately on March 16th in 2021 when it was repealed. So Donnie Kiper's got a couple of slides to give you some perspective on industry feedback, and then we'll do our best to answer your questions.
Great. Welcome, Donnie.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Council. So these will be, these next two slides will go pretty quick. It's just some feedback that we received from the hauling industry on some takeaways and some, some lessons learned. So that first one, increased liability is, was one that they brought up. They, some of them had been approached by some residents that it could be perceived as some, some type of a trespassing. So if they're beside or behind the house looking for a garbage can, because the city ordinance states that it has to be in an inconspicuous location where they have to go onto private property, it could be a concern. Extended time in traffic, so that's where they may have to stop in the middle of traffic to walk up, to grab cans, look for it, or, or, you know, try to spend more time looking for it and bringing it down where they, where they're impeding on traffic, could be, you know, traffic, you know, wrecks and things like that, that's, that's a liability. So, and of course, you know, with those accidents, that impacts insurance premiums, of course. So the next one was a pretty big one, safety concerns, unsafe surfaces during certain times of the year, difference, faulting or difference in elevations in concrete asphalt surfaces where, you know, trip hazards and so forth. And then snow-covered driveway was a big one, because, you know, there's residents that may work overnights where they can't get their driveways shoveled in a timely fashion, so they would have to drag the cans through the snow, of course. Curbside significantly reduced the amount of injuries. They're saying that that is, one of their biggest concerns is, is injuries and, and creating, you know, problems with their employees getting back to work. So, and then staffing, his, the available staffing right now remains a concern. It was during COVID with the labor market so short right now. There are several, several haulers that are operating with, with minimal staff. Some of them could be right in that five-staff short where they're all working overtime. Many haulers continue to operate valet service, of course, where they have to go up, get the containers. That puts a strength, puts stress on the employee after, you know, thousands of stops. You have to go to each of these residents and, and pick them up. And so, you know, that deters many people from applying for, for that type of a work. So you can see in that picture there, we noted that, you know, the cans are, they have to walk up steps to get the cans to bring back down to dump in their trucks. Both of those are, you know, pretty common throughout the city in some of the older areas. Next slide here is just kind of some feedback we got from previous and current practices. This is just some data that, some, some general data averages. They found that 15% to 20% of residents were placing cans at or near curbside before the pandemic or before the emergency ordinance. They found that 70% to 85% with the participation of the emergency ordinance, 50% to 60% continue to place their cans at or near the curbside even after the ordinance was repealed. So, you know, that could be anywhere from, you know, just, you know, it's a habit, or people moving to town to, that have just been doing that, you know, for many, many, for a long time. So the deficiencies, you know, about 40% time savings, less truck time spent on residential streets, you know, that's, you know, wear and tear on surfaces, less fuel consumption helps the environment, and of course saves costs. And then one of their, one of their biggest benefits would be to, for price stabilization and, and have long-term benefits on, on the rates of garbage collection. So with that, we'll take any questions that you might have.
Again, really just to try to open a dialogue today on, on some of the things that you guys heard through this process that we can take back and just trying to understand your perspectives as we have this. And again, we do have some haulers here. If you want to ask some of their perspectives, I know Jesse with AOK and potentially others are willing to share some perspectives.
Okay, great. Let's open it up. Counsel Kylie.
Thank you very much. I have had discussions just at, well, sent pictures last evening and had follow-up discussions with Director Cotter earlier today. It is true that we rescinded the temporary ordinance that allowed curbside service or, or leaving the containers near the curbside. We rescinded that March 16th, and so technically, at some point in April, that should not have been allowed any longer. However, yesterday, when I was out walking my dog between 5:30 and 6:00, my neighborhood, it was just littered with containers that were still left empty, and so they were left by the hauler in this case, left empty curbside at the end of the driveways. Now, I don't know if the homeowner took them down. I just know that once the container was dumped and it was emptied, it was not moved back up, up to the residence. So technically, that's in violation of our current ordinance. So I think this is something that we need to address, and I think there, it's logical that there's going to be some confusion on this, because it was in place, then we took it away, now it's back in place again. So I, I see that, the confusion. So if we're going to keep it the way it is currently, we need to do a better job ourselves of communicating that to the public and also to the haulers. So it's a clear message to, to all. You know, I, 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 I hear the hauler's side of this, the impact it could have on insurance premiums, fewer lost time injuries. When we talk about injuries, though, then I'm also thinking about what about injuries to the homeowner, taking it down during the same condition? And you might scoff at that if you wish, but it's, it's, it's an issue. If it's an issue for the hauler, it's going to be an issue for the homeowner as well. So that's, there's a trade-off there, so which, you know, we, it's something that we would have to consider. Quite frankly, the valet service, I, I think there is maybe a possibility where there's room for compromise and maybe permit valet service if the, I would be willing to at least entertain a structured payment system that if the haulers wanted to implement it for valet service, what is currently in place right now, I would think is what we're calling valet service or the concierge service. If the haulers were willing to reduce what the current cost is, because there is a time savings, there is an insurance savings, there's a savings in lost time accidents, and hopefully that could all be passed on to the homeowner, if the expectation is that the additional charge for this valet service would be tacked on to what they're all already paying, I can tell you I would 100% vote against that. So I, I think it is something that we, we should look into and discuss what the possibilities are and see if we can't find some common ground and some compromise there. But I, I think it's probably necessary for, for you to get on our agenda again, where we could have maybe a longer discussion on this particular topic. Thank you.
Counselor Sale.
Thank you. This could be for any of the haulers. As we talked about this a year ago, it had to, it was pitched to us because you were short-staffed, and that is a consistent theme we hear from everybody in Sioux Falls, whether you're running a Dairy Queen or you're in construction or even in the insurance business, which is hard to believe that people don't want to get in the insurance business, I'll tell you that. But any of you could answer this. So we're talking about your cost savings. What kind of savings did you see in this past year when you didn't have to go and pick it up alongside the house? And were those savings passed on to the consumer at that time?
If you want to just identify yourself and who you're with, that'd be great.
Jesse DeWitt, AOK Sanitary, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. The time savings is the biggest factor we have, which obviously trickles down into employment as well. We didn't find ourselves super short-staffed. We did for a little while. We did lose a couple of people to COVID. They were scared. Replacing them was difficult. We, we were ahead of the game before it happened, so it wasn't that big of a deal for us on the staff, but it did make it easier asking our customers to bring it to the curb. We definitely save time. We definitely save costs. Passing it on to the customers wasn't so much in the immediate, it was more of a long-term thing. Like now prices are going up in fuel and whatnot, and we have not raised our rates because of it. So what we're, what we were saving and what we're currently saving is slowing the rate at which we're going to increase. So why we didn't just directly give it back to the customer, it was more of a long-term thing, because no one saw, no one sees COVID going away, you know, next year, the year after. It may never go away. So it's much more of a long-term plan than just, hey, you did this, did you give back this much money to the customer? No, it was more like a progressive thing, and that's what we're going by. I will say while I'm up here, there are a couple more points to the curbside that I didn't see up there. It really helps with, especially when people have extra garbage or things that they want taken or don't want taken, to allow, to ask them to put it on the curb or whatnot. We've thrown away grills and things like that next to a house that should have never gone, but they looked like garbage, and then we get, you know, we get the call that, and we end up replacing stuff like that. Being able to ask our customers to put that all on the curb is another step in just eliminating confusion with what is supposed to go and what's not supposed to go.
Thank you. Should, anybody else have any perspective on this question, maybe, before we move on?
Well, I'll just make a follow-up statement then. If, if we're going to talk about from here on out or some point in the future, allowing curbside pickup, what I'm going to need to make that decision is some data on, okay, it costs us X to go down to the side of my house to pick it up. It's going to save the consumer Y amount of money going in the future, and we talk about price stabilization, it's going to be, and we will not raise our rates based on all of this. So I'm going to need a lot more data when it comes to that. I will tell you, and I appreciate the survey. Of course, I understand a, a garbage hauler would like to make the shortest distance from his vehicle to the garbage. But as Counselor Kylie pointed out, we, we have been talked to by consumers that, maybe they're elderly or whatever the case may be, that they don't want to make that out there. And it's always been one of the things Sioux Falls has done, different than a lot of other cities, has kept it to the curb. So I'm going to need a lot more data on, on this whole thing, on what rates are, where we see projections, what we could see, because when, when and if we do get to that decision, I'm pretty sure this room will be full of consumers, constituents, clients of the city that are going to say, no, I want it back by my, the side of my garage. And I think you'll have competitors out there saying, we will pick it up the side of your garage. And then you're going to have a whole different clientele, and then all of a sudden, we're going to have more trucks running down the street, which is a whole different discussion. So I appreciate it. I thank you guys all for being here. I think it's a discussion we need to have.
Let's go to Counsel Kylie, and, and we'll see who's next.
Sure. Thank you. I, I just want to follow up, number one, to make it perfectly clear that I love the service that I have been provided the entire time that I've lived in the city of Sioux Falls. There's no issues with that. I do have concerns over everybody's safety, the homeowner as, as well as the service provider, too. So I do think that it's, it's something that is going to be more complex than what we think. Certainly warrants more time than what we have here today. So I would again suggest that you work with the, with leadership and with the city clerk's office to identify time where we could spend a greater period of time on this topic.
Okay. Let's go to Counselor Erickson on the phone, and then we'll see who else has input.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to share a little of my, my story with, with this. I'm certainly an able-bodied person. I have no problem bringing my, my garbage cans down to the curb secretly. I wouldn't do it if I saw the trucks coming. I would quickly bring it to the edge of the curb anyways, just to be helpful. And oftentimes, they'd bring it back up to the side of my garage for the particular hauler that I have. We, we own a rental business, and so my concerns for some of this has been I don't want to force my tenants to do it in ten-plex or a five-plex that you don't know who's doing it. Now, I did not have any interruption with my particular hauler. However, some of the feedback that I did get from even legislators and myself, I travel quite a bit for sports for my, my kiddos. I would put the garbage out by my garage, and it would sit, because they wouldn't come get it during this period of time. And that was really frustrating and unfortunate for me, because I was out of town. So now you can't get my garbage. And so that was some of the feedback that I, I had heard, and I called my hauler at the time, who, who is not local, and had made a concern about it. And they said, well, unless it's on the curb, we can't pick it up. And that's the issue that I don't want to see garages and homes overflowing with garbage because our cans weren't on the side of the road. Again, for me personally, I have no issues putting it on the side of the road. I don't, I, I know there are some that do, some that travel, and so it's really truly hard to just say one and done. I also don't want to get in the business of regulating private business rates for that. I know we've had issues in the past with taxis and things of that sort, and, and that's something that I'm, I'm just not interested in regulating. One, one interesting tidbit I'll share is, you know, Rick and, Rick, Counsel Kylie and I started seven years ago, almost to the day, and one of our first votes we ever made was on where garbage cans go. And here we are, seven years later, and who knew it would be kind of as emotional as it is. I would have never guessed garbage can placement would be as emotional as it, as it is. But I know that we as, you know, constituents, when our constituents and, and business folks, you know, pay for our service, we certainly expect for that to be picked up. And so with that comes other issues. I, I hope that we can continue the conversation. I know other cities do it differently, and it works. For me personally, I saw an increase in my bill, because I missed putting it on the curbside two times, and so I saw an increase of $10 on my bill, and that's just unfortunate. If it's supposed to save time, we shouldn't have seen an increase on the bills, at least for that time saving. So I don't have a question, but just more or less sharing my story and kind of how it impacts business owners and constituents, and really truly just taking a wider approach at this to see what changes need to be happening.
Thank you. Others, Counsel Brecky.
How many garbage haulers do we currently have licensed?
So we have a question, how many garbage haulers do we currently have licensed? There's actually 23 licensed haulers. There's 13 that operate inside the city of Sioux Falls, and then if you expand that to include the entire five counties, there's 16 licensed haulers. But when you look at all of them, including the contractors that haul the CND, there's 23 licensed haulers. But really what you're talking about here, if there's, you know, one of the things we try to do is try to have really good policy for all five counties, but if there was something specific to Sioux Falls, it would only be within the city of Sioux Falls, because if you look at some of the surrounding towns, they would regulate those activities.
Thank you. I would just like to make a couple statements, too. It is my opinion that the city of Sioux Falls is in a luxury position at this point, because we have had the kind of garbage service that we have had over the years, and it is because we have treated the garbage industry differently, and it's just evolved differently in the city of Sioux Falls. So when this issue is brought before me, I view it, I view it from that perspective. The residents of the citizens of Sioux Falls have been in a luxury position, because we have, the industry has been highly competitive with numerous garbage haulers. We don't have a municipal service. We don't have a contract service. We're not at the mercy of one or two or three really large providers. But as that evolution occurred, that was what some of the industry wanted to happen. We started out with 38 garbage haulers back when we actually started regulating them. We started out with 38 garbage haulers back when we actually started regulating them. And when we started regulating them and requiring certain things, then those in the industry that were serious about it, you know, made serious investments into it, and the number got smaller, and some of those small mom and shop operations ceased. But every so often, the large providers, as they entered the system, Waste Management and who's the NOVAC Sanitary Service, those are two large providers who've been, you know, some of the largest providers in the country. And there's always been pressure on the city that's been brought to bear. Every so often, the industry is unified, and they've come and said, you know, we would like to do it the way we do it everywhere else. And it has been emotional, because when the citizens find out about it, they start to realize they're in a luxury position, and they don't want to let it go. And I don't know, as a council member, that I want to be the one that says, you know, I'm going to sacrifice what they've enjoyed for all these years so that the industry can make more money. Because if there's 23 garbage haulers, I can tell you they're making enough money, or they wouldn't be in the business, because those that couldn't make a go of it got out of the business. And still having 23 or 13, however you want to divide it up, that's still a lot of haulers, and that's still a very fiercely competitive industry in the city. We have a very unique thing. Again, the way it's evolved, the way we have these multiple providers, and it's been a benefit to the citizens. And because of that competition, you have haulers that are willing to go and bring the garbage out to the curb side and do that extra service for the citizen. So, you know, I think it's just important that we understand that going into this. This discussion's happened before, and it's usually on pressure from the industry, because it's not their favorite way to do business. It does cost them more. But if we do this, we are clearly saying that we're going to take industry's needs over the citizens, because the citizens, at this point, you know, have enjoyed this service for many, many years. And I would be hard-pressed to take it away from them for some, for, you know, any reason short of, you know, sort of a health-safety reason or something like that. But for what I'm looking at, it looks to me like it's more just economics, and it's more what's better for business than what it is for the citizens. So I will be one that'll probably be hard to flip on that, but I have had a long history with it. And again, I just, I think it's important to understand that we are different from other cities, but it's been in a good way for the service of our citizens.
Thank you. Others, Counselor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess that was my, to follow up with what Counselor Brecky said. It was one of the first things that I was thinking after the presentation, is we saw the thoughts and the information from the industry, but we didn't see anything from our residents of our city. And I know that's tougher to collect, and I'm going to go back and look in the citizen survey that the council does every other year now to take a look. But the pictures that we saw as part of the presentations, we saw the nice, neat, empty cans along the street. What I saw as part of the process was the neighbors who drug it all to the street the night before, and half of it blew into the yard. The windy days when there were containers in the street along, it was 18th Street, after I dropped my daughter off in the morning, and you go down the street with all the trash on the curb, and the look of it, the blowing, the things that we have with different weather patterns in South Dakota, it just makes it a lot tougher. So, I mean, there's definitely two sides to this entire story. And the residents that I've talked to about it, and especially the ones that have reached out to me, they were quite concerned that they thought they were doing their part to help during the COVID time, but they saw extra charges on their bill when they went back and saw ballet charges or they saw their prices go up when they felt like they were trying to do their part to help the industry out. Because our community is very helpful, and when this happened, again, from your numbers, we saw people who wanted to be helpful and wanted to be part of making a difference. But this is, it would be a huge change in a change in service quality that I don't think most residents are going to be ready for, and definitely an educational process. Because, again, like I said, in a time of need, people were more than willing to reach out. I'd like to see, I think Director Cotter, at one time, we talked about number of complaints and that there wasn't a lot of trash complaints blowing around. But I think that was probably part of that time period as well, that people just went and picked it up. When I see it blowing through my yard, I go pick it up, and we throw it. But I think we're going to add to that, and we're going to see more of that over time, if that's where we're at. I tried to print pictures, and I couldn't get the printer to work exactly. But as we move forward, I'll share some of those if we do choose to move forward. So, thank you.
Others. We'll go back to Counselor Kylie.
You know, if we do some type of a survey for the residents, I really do believe that we need to give them some options, and there could be three different options. Leave it as is now, where the hauler goes up, gets it, takes it down, empties it, goes back up, and then back to their truck. Or possibly where the resident takes it down, and then the hauler just returns it, cuts down a little bit on there. Or the resident does it all, takes it down, takes it back, with savings. So otherwise, I don't know if we just say leave it as is now. I think you'd have to give them some kind of options to clarify it, so they would know what they were really voting on or selecting. I'm not necessarily convinced that if they could save a buck, that they wouldn't look and entertain some different possibilities than that. So I think we just need to be sure that we spell it out and make it pretty clear. And there could be other possibilities that you could talk with residents or with the haulers, too. But I do think we need to hear from both sides, however. I do agree with that.
Okay, I do have a few comments, but just to really quick clarify, the rule in terms of where you store the cans, does it still have to be essentially not visible from the right-of-way? Like in the garage or on the side of the garage?
Counselor, the language speaks to it. Needs to be in an inconspicuous place, reasonably accessible to the hauler. So there's some open interpretation when you use that type of language. And that's why, that's one of the things that I think we need to really look at, just to make it more clear than it currently is.
Okay, and then, okay, and then in terms of, what is the exact language in terms of where the can is supposed to be on Collection Day?
So if you look at the current language for garbage and recycling containers, it'll say, "All garbage and recycling containers shall be kept in inconspicuous place, beside or behind the structure, which is reasonably accessible to the licensed hauler." That's the current language. If you look in the yard waste language, it'll say, "If collected by a garbage hauler, yard waste and yard waste containers shall be placed at a location other than curbside designated for collection by the garbage hauler contacted to remove the same." "All yard waste and containers shall be kept in inconspicuous place except for placed for collection." So there's a specific call-out on Collection Day. And you'll see very similar language for the single stream. And so that's where, at least specific to the garbage and recycling section, it's not as clear as what it'll say for yard waste and the single-stream containers.
Yeah, okay, so even that language, there's some vagary there. It could be argued that the can could be in a lot of places in the yard and meet the ordinance, and that the garbage hauler would have to go grab it from...
Right, they could, I think you could reasonably interpret that, that it could be pulled all the way down the driveway. It just says "other than curbside."
But, well, but I mean, and I mean by that, I mean, somebody, some people may have like a detached garage that's set back well from the house, and, I mean, potentially the can could be in a lot of places on the property, and the hauler would have to presumably go get it from that wherever. It could vary based on the property, is what I'm saying, I think. Is that...
I think that's fair.
It's not just a given that it has to be in the front of the garage or something. It's pretty, okay, okay, fair enough. So I guess my particular thoughts are a little conflicted here, because people have obviously come to expect this service. It's important to people. I think the safety thing does go both ways. I grant the garbage hauler's safety concern. I think that, you know, anybody who's going to be traversing a longer distance and going over potential hazards, I also do have elderly people that contact me that are very concerned about going down an icy driveway with a garbage can. So I don't think that's an illegitimate concern as well. We did have a situation, I know there's at least one hauler that, you know, charges a $12 concierge fee, and they're allowed to do that. I guess I, you know, I think some people do have some concerns about aesthetics, about them being at the end of the driveway. There's a temptation I do have of, you know, it does feel a little strange to be telling, you know, an industry, because this is really kind of a, it's really, I don't know what the right term would be, but it's sort of a value-add service, you know, to be telling them that you have to do it. I mean, my pure market instinct would be to say, let them choose. And then if hauler A says, we're going to charge this much, and we're going to bring your cans back to the, you know, to your garage, and hauler B says, well, we're not going to do that, or we're going to charge you extra, and we're going to leave them at the street, you know, there's a lot of players in the market, and you could make that choice. And then a hauler may even decide, and I guess I'd be curious if any haulers has any comments, if you had the choice, would you offer both options and just have an additional fee? Or would you, has anybody given that any thought? Or would you rather just have no, I guess you're the spokesman for the group, but...
Again, Jesse, AOK Sanitary Service. To answer your question, we've considered both options. Us as a company personally will always bring the can back. I mean, that's the way we do it. We pride ourselves on service, so that's the way it's going to be. The thing that the, I think the field that the city is looking for and the garbage industry as a whole is looking for is not a mandatory one-way or another of three options, one, two, or three. It's, like you said, just allowing the company as a whole to make its own decision on how it wants to run business. And you nailed it perfectly. If an 80-year-old woman has a company that is requiring her to put it on the curb, she's more than welcome to find a company like mine that's not. And I think that's what they're looking for, is just the ability to make that decision as a business for itself.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you. So I guess I'd call myself in the open category, although I'd like to hear from, I think there's a strong contingent of citizens, I don't know if it's majority, who enjoy this service, and they probably don't want it to end. So that's where this is difficult. So I hope the feedback helps. If you have any thoughts on next steps or anything you need from us?
I think we just want to say thank you for the dialogue today. I think from an education standpoint, an option standpoint, we do have a good connection through the, with the haulers, the Salloway's Planning Board. We also do have citizen reps on that board as well. But let us look in our archives to see what we have for past survey information, and we can certainly contemplate another survey. They're pretty easy to deploy. And then ultimately, at least what I heard today was there isn't necessarily a black-and-white mandate that you guys are, that you're at least open to hearing some options and an approach. And so let us take that feedback back, and then we'll meet with the Salloway's Planning Board. And also, before, like any final policies are brought before you, we will come back before you guys and just, again, kind of gauge your interest, make sure we're going down the right path. So, thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Interesting discussion. That brings us to our second and final presentation. TIF update, Sue Steele. Dustin Powers, Community Development Coordinator, and we also have Jake Kwasny here, who's the Executive Vice President of Development for Lloyd Companies.
Good afternoon, Council. Dustin Powers with Planning and Development Services. Again, Jake Kwasny with Lloyd Companies is here with me today. Today, we are here to revisit the Development and Tax Increment District for the Sue Steele site in downtown Sioux Falls. If you recall from last February, City Council heard and approved a request from CR Lloyd Associates for Tax Increment District Number 22 to support the redevelopment of the Sue Steele site. That TIF, TIF 22, was approved for a little over $21.5 million plus the cost of financing to support the construction of a 900-plus-stall parking ramp that would support the density of the redevelopment of the site. As you know, shortly after February of last year, we entered in some unknown times with the COVID-19 pandemic, and as a result, the project was delayed. Now, again, though, the project is gearing up to move forward. And with that, CR Lloyd Associates has requested that we reset the timeline for the Tax Increment Finance District. To do that, we would have to dissolve the current district that we have and create a new district. So ultimately dissolving Tax Increment District Number 22 and creating a new district, which would be 24 to the city of Sioux Falls. All items related to the boundaries of the TIF, the project plan, as well as the development agreement, would all remain the same. So the actual TIF request would remain the same. We would just be recreating a new district and looking for approval for that to continue to move the project forward. So today, what we have Jake here for is to really update you on the project status, where it's at, provide you some background on that TIF request, and then we would be happy to answer any questions you have. We do intend to bring this forward in the next couple of months for your consideration for the dissolving of that current district and creating a new. So you'll hear more from us as time goes along. So I'll turn it over to Jake for an update.
Welcome, Jake. Thanks for coming today.
Thank you, and it's kind of funny to be back here having the same conversation a year later, but about the effective date of this TIF was about the day we were sitting at a restaurant on the south side. And the people running the restaurant said, hey, they're going to shut us down. And we're talking with a bank about funding the project. So it's been a weird year. Fortunately, we live in a great community, a lot of really great people, and a lot of really good things happening. And so we did take a step back and look at this project. You know, we obviously had a lot invested in it a year ago, and we've continued to invest in it to date. And what you're going to see is a project that's largely unchanged with one small tweak to it that I think just makes it a little bit better, and that comes from some feedback we got from the community. But other than that, it's a similar project, and it's going to deliver the same environment for the community. This is the site plan. You know, we've got the 920-stall parking garage. It's wrapped with retail and residential. And then what we've added is a sixth floor, which is condos. And that's really the only tweak to this whole project. And what you won't see in our numbers here today is where it has the green future. We're estimating that's an additional $22 million construction project that will finish this project, kind of as we bring up the tail end. And that has the flexibility to be either office or residential, depending on what we see demand as we get into the project here. All of this is connected with a Skywalk that connects an office tower, 175,000 square feet, with ground-floor restaurants, and then a 216-room Canopy by Hilton Hotel and a mid-sized convention space. This is the view of it looking back from the falls. As you can see, we haven't really changed much. This is actually the exact same picture. What will be different is there will be a sixth story on the little parking garage that you see through there. Other than that, this is largely the same, creating that same environment with the really active alley between the hotel and the office tower. We want to create a very walkable environment, contributing to the walkable downtown that we've really seen just thrive throughout Sioux Falls. This is kind of, if you were to get up on a big ladder on the berm at the levee and then look back, this is what you'd see, and none of that really has changed. $75 million hotel. We're going to be able to host up to 800 people in the largest ballroom, 550 people if you had them on round tables in the big ballroom there. And we have, depending on how you break it up, seven or eight other breakout rooms within that or junior ballrooms. And then the office tower is about $55 million. In addition to Lloyd Companies and the restaurants, we do have a few other office tenants that we're looking forward to being able to come forward with in the near future. This is the area south of 4th Street, that parking ramp, which is largely what we're here talking about on the TIF. We've managed to not incur extra costs by building around it instead of on top of it. 920 stalls, there will be some of those that are leased at different times, but we've significantly overparked the development, and it'll operate like a city ramp does. like a city ramp does during nights and weekends. Those excess spaces will be free, and during the day, it'll charge like the city ramp does during the life of the TIF. These numbers here include our, our round figure project costs. It does not include that $22 million future phase of the ramp. So in total, we've got somewhere in the neighborhood of a $215 million project here that, that will be delivering this component. We want to start construction in August of this year and really complete all of it within a three-year time span. These are the, the current numbers. $71,000 is the current tax payment, and we're projecting forward to 2.8 million. I talked about the ramp operations. You know, Lloyd Companies and Craig Lloyd are going to stand behind this. That's, that's who you'll be dealing with for the, the long term. And we're certainly going to bring investors along, but ultimately, the buck stops with Craig. And there's some information here on the revenues. We've worked with the CBB to provide some of the economic benefits of the project. And I know we talked about this last year. So there, there's some bid revenue that will come in from the project with $117,000 going to the current bid, as well as other revenues driving sales taxes and state taxes, not only from the project from a sales tax perspective, almost a little over $6 million. But the, the ongoing tax revenue will be pretty significant. This is our timeline to start, late summer. So August, September this year, we'll be in the ground, hopefully pulling down the buildings a little sooner than that. The effective date of the TIF for the timeline here would be early August. So that's when we can start incurring costs. But we want to be operational in the spring of 2024 with that hotel, because that's really what, as we look at the recovery and the wave that will come with that for those, this sort of a, a property, we really do believe that that's going to be prime time to, to catch the energy and everything that's going on with Sioux Falls. This was the, the calculations that were done by the, the CBB last year and, and carries forward. If you look, we've got a, a third-party study that supports these, these numbers again, almost, almost exactly. And we're at $25.2 million of economic benefit from this project. The, the city kind of laid out the timing here for us. So we're here today. They're going to provide the notice with those edits, really changing a, a number and a couple dates on the, the agreements and moving forward. They're going to provide that notice in a couple of days here. And then we've got a number of briefings ultimately coming back before you in the middle of June and early July. I think that kind of covers my comments, and, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Let's open it up to questions. Questions, comments. Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, very exciting project. Tell me a little more about the condos. I know there's a lot of different facets to this, but the condo one, tell me a little bit about that. So there'll be 25 of them? Like, what kind of price ranges and sizes?
Yeah. So we have five of them that are actually on the ground level. They'll be kind of a, a modern brownstone sort of a feel up against what is Kiwanis Park. And then depending on the sizes at the top, they're really customizable. The ones on the top of the ramp, there could be as many as 20 up there, depending on the size. They can range anywhere from 800 square feet to 3, 4,000 square feet, depending on what people want. And the, the per square foot price of those ranges from 375 to 600 plus, depending on where they are, the size, the, the view, those sort of factors as to what, what you're getting.
Okay. Yeah, that was one of my questions, if it was kind of, people will come in and tailor make and order, kind of order what they want type of thing. So.
Right now, it is. At some point, you know, when a couple of people make an order, I think the only one who officially has put his name on it, although I've gotten a few texts since Jody issued her story an hour ago. The only one who's got his name on one for sure is Craig. But other than that, they're, they're open and we'll start to fill it in. And hopefully, we pre-sell them all so the bankers in the room can get comfortable.
Right. All right. Exciting. Well, thank you.
Counselor Sale.
Thank you. Two things. First off, you've projected that you're going to start breaking, it could start breaking ground yet this fall, and in two years, have your hotel done. Can you talk a little bit to me about how you see that whole industry, the tourism, the travel industry bouncing back? It's certainly one that's really taken a, they've been hurt hard.
They absolutely have. And, and in South Dakota, we've been far more fortunate than most parts of the country in that regard. Probably less so on the east side of the state here as they were on the west side of the state throughout 2020. But it still has hurt. And it, it's been a slow recovery, and, and we're certainly seeing those numbers bounce back here, especially now. But people want to travel, and we really are seeing that continue to trend up every month. And so when you look at the industry, they're kind of projecting forward, especially the leisure travelers really picking up over the next 18 to 24 months. The business travel, everyone's still trying to figure out how much of this Zoom and, you know, go-to meetings and those sort of things, how much of that is really going to continue to be effective? We know that'll impact business travel from, for some perspective. But, you know, when we look at convention space that we, like we have here, one of the big things this does is they really do think you're going to go away from national conventions and looking to more regional conventions. But hybrid is going to be critical. So you got to have the technology, you got to be able to pick up the audio. So we're building a really new, modern facility that can tailor to those events and really service them well.
Last question, Jake, and first, really appreciate everything you guys have done down there for staying on task this whole year. The retail that you're going to have down there, what do you see for retail in that area?
Yeah. We continue to have interest from kind of, you know, the small boutique shop retail users that are all over downtown, and we continue to see be successful. As far as the restaurants, we do have three concepts that will be coming out that are committed. We're partnering with them to bring concepts from the Twin Cities. They're successful operators that have done that and, and delivered on those concepts. So we're going to create some of that collaborative, interactive environment and atmosphere and, and make sure that it's a part of this. But you're continuing to see, you know, the, the service-based retail and the kind of, the niche shops that want to be in those really active places. And, you know, with the, the announcement of the Jacobson Plaza, it just turns this up one more level because we've got year-round activity. There's, there's always a reason to be in uptown Sioux Falls now.
Thank you. Counselor Kylie.
Thank you very much. This project has already been granted a TIF. You're, you're coming back because we basically need to dissolve the current TIF for this project because the timelines are, have been impacted negatively by COVID and a pandemic. So we'll be authorizing, we will be authorizing, or at least the proposal will be coming forward to authorize a new, new TIF for this project with new timelines. You know, I was going to ask for a brief summary of, you know, some of the changes that maybe have taken place. But basically, the TIF is for the parking. Anytime, anytime a developer comes forward and is going to offer to build parking, and then allow the public access to that parking that the developer has built, I will entertain a TIF. You know, I think that's a win-win situation for, for all involved. So basically, I guess my question then, is there really any difference between the parking in terms of the number of spaces, if you could review that again, from what we previously authorized to this?
There's, there's not. No, we're continuing to operate it, you know, 900 to 930 has always been where we were estimating it to be. And that depends on the number of compact stalls, the number of charging units we put in there. So there's some things like that that are a little up in the air and, you know, the, the technology around some of those things is ever evolving. So it, it's right in that range.
The number of spaces?
Yep.
Similar as well?
Yeah. We haven't, we haven't changed the design of that ramp.
Yeah. 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 Technology, boy, you, you lose a year and you just lost a year in advances in technology. So I can understand that. You, you still have some questions about implementation of technology. So I don't have any concern over that. You know, the, any other changes to the project, you know, are not really related to the request for the TIF. I think it's a great project. I like what I see and look forward to the first reading. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Brecky.
Just a quick statement. I'm glad that you're ready to go in September. When COVID was happening, I was thinking about this project. And I thought, wow, that was a big aggressive project. I wonder what's going on in their world right now. And suffice it to say, I'm glad that it's only impacted you by a year. And I'm happy to, you know, you know, revote on it and, you know, just, we, you know, you came in and asked for that year, and of course, we said, of course. But I'm, I'm glad it only impacted that. I'm glad you're ready to go in September. And I'm more than happy to just, you know, redo the TIF. Again, the only, it appears the only change is really just, I, I know that there was some discussion about couldn't we just change the dates, but there was a legal reason why we couldn't do that. So we have to recreate the whole TIF. So I just think it's important the public to understand, this has really already been approved. It's only a year, a year late because of, of the COVID. And thank goodness for that, that, that you guys are still feeling that things are in a situation where you're comfortable going forward. I think we should all be very excited about that. I know I am. And I look forward to go ahead and giving you the marching orders to go ahead and, and get this thing going in September.
Well, we're fortunate to have really great leaders in the community and a very supportive family in Craig and Pat and their kids to let us go out and, and do this. So we're excited for it. And I thank you all for the support you've provided the last few years.
Counselor Starr.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kwasny, for being here. Can, can we make the technology go backwards? I got actually literally a question last week about Kiwanis Park and how it's going to fit into this project. So I'm trying to remember if I saw one of the drawings that were better than the other there.
Yep. So, you know, and the city is, is got it in their plans to make those improvements. So what we have there, that, that road that wraps this, we have to do that and circulate it for fire purposes. That's a one-lane road. So you're not going from south to north on that road if you come through to the development. We're trying to push as much traffic as possible to get really comfortable pulling into that parking ramp, as hard as it is for South Dacotans to want to pull into a parking ramp. So we want to really drive that down. We used as the inspiration for that, the, the wharf in Washington DC where, you know, cars really have to slow down there because people will just be walking in the middle of the road. So we wanted to make sure with kids and stuff there in the park that we, we throttled down any traffic that does come through there. And then you see, that's not high, high traffic. Those are the five kind of modern brownstones right there over the park. And then we have our leasing office on that corner for the apartments.
And maybe my questions for Director Ekoff then of what, or Dustin, what we have planned for that park area and what, if, if there's still an opportunity to partner with some of the local Kiwanis groups or, I'm stretching what we're doing. I apologize. But like I said, I, I spoke to a, a Kiwanis club last week, and that was one of their questions, if there was an opportunity yet to become involved. And so maybe I'm just, you know, there's still a couple of groups in town. So.
Yeah, I think we can definitely pass that message along and work with the Parks Department and Confluence and, and some of the others that are working on the design of this project. As you recall, just a month or so ago, you guys voted on the million dollars that would go towards the design of this. So what you see up there is, is probably not the final product, obviously, along the Greenway portion at least. And so we'll be working with Jake and his team on the coordination of how that all interlinks together. But, you know, there may still be opportunity for if some clubs or something want to get involved on the public portion of this project to do that. So we can definitely pass that message along to, to Director Kearney as well as the design group once they get going on the project. So.
Perfect. Thank you.
Others? We'll go to Counselor Kylie.
This isn't TIF-related. This is probably more staff-related. The, the Fourth Street that extends into this project and just north of Leavitt at the Falls. Now, that backside of the Leavitt is elevated quite a bit. How much more would we have to elevate it in order to basically have a tunnel going beneath the Leavitt at the Falls so that you don't have pedestrian conflicts back and forth across Fourth Street, which greatly improves pedestrian safety? And probably even elevates the backside of the Leavitt even more so for viewing of the concerts. Is that even?
I believe, so let me just make sure I understand. Your question is whether or not there would be a, could be a tunnel for Fourth Street so that there's no pedestrian conflicts with the Leavitt?
Sure. And I don't mean going down. I mean, it's just basically excavating and, and, and a bit of what's already there and then covering it back up again.
Yeah.
You know, like a giant culvert.
I, I don't know if we've considered that, but with the, you know, one of the things we have to look at is what the grade of current Phillips Avenue is on what we can actually do there. And then also the grade of the site, the final grade of the site for the Sue Steele redevelopment. So there will be some grade change there. And so it's kind of, I think the best approach will be for it to be at the, at grade level. And yes, you know, well, one of the parts of the design of that is to make sure that, you know, the pedestrian environment is, is safe there. So as people are coming into the development, that road, we'll be working with Jake and Lloyd Companies. That'll be a, a road that they'll be, be building as part of the project. And, and we'll be, through a private easement there that will have the public accessibility and stuff with it. So I do think that the design of that's still to be determined, but I, I don't think we have the, the capability of, of kind of creating a, a underpass or for that site as it's currently constructed when you look at Phillips Avenue and then as it'll relate to as it enters the development.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. I just wanted that thought entertained, you know, at this point in time. Because it does seem that there would have to be some removal of, of soil at that point, and maybe a retaining wall on the backside if you're going to keep it at, at the grade of Phillips Avenue and Fourth Street going in. It's hard to tell without being on site. But I think the backside of the Leavitt is quite a bit above street level at that point. That's just why I had the thought of if we can actually go under.
Yeah, absolutely. The backside of the Leavitt is fairly, is fairly high compared to where Fourth Street will be located. Again, that's something we can consider and look at it when we, when we go into that.
Looks like maybe Jake. Okay. Very good.
Yeah. So to close it out, I, I do think that, and I'm sure the developer's aware of it, that Fourth Street, and I'm not sure what we, if that others, the east-west road has any name at this point or what that is called. But I think that is a good point, especially right there, that that would be a, a really important point to figure out how to make it pedestrian-friendly, to make, traffic's got to flow, but that it's a really, I could see people going back, maybe they're going from the Leavitt over to the parking ramp, or they're going from the hotel over to the Leavitt. And just that, that particular intersection, how do you balance those two needs? I, I do have a question, and, and I do want to say that I'm, I'm, I was frankly just, you know, worried in the last year. I was hoping that the vision wouldn't change, and it hasn't. I wanted, I was hoping that you would hold on and you could still keep to the vision because it was so exciting. My one question is, there's a, a line here on steel district bid. Have we talked about it that in the past? About creating a steel, like a Sue Steel bid district? I don't know that I recall that.
Yeah, I believe that the, we probably hit a little bit more on it on the first informational that was presented as part of this project. What, what that's looking at is, if you recall, so we have the downtown, so there's, there's really two bids in the city. There's the CBB or the Experience Sioux Falls bid that's a, a tax on the hotels. And then we also have our down Main Street Business Improvement District in downtown Sioux Falls. This would be related more to the hotel side of things. So what he, what was presented up there was what the current bid would collect, so that $2 per night based on projections. But the steel district bid would be an additional $2 bid assessment that they would come to the city and request to be able to place on their property to do some additional improvements and promotions and events. So this would be similar. So this would be similar. We did do this for the Hilton Garden Inn Downtown. So the Hilton Garden Inn Downtown does the normal $2 a night tax on their room night stays. And then they requested an amount of an additional $2, and they have to come to City Council to to do that request. So that would be a a future request down the line, obviously, with the hotel and the completion of that not being until opening in 2024 with this timeline. We have some time with that. But ultimately, you know, the the idea of that was be able to promote the area and promote the district and the events and do some of the additional, that can do anything with additional streetscaping promotion of the area or that they have as well as surrounding improvements associated with the development. So I I believe we addressed it a little bit more. It just hasn't, we haven't brought it to council because obviously, project's got to get started, and, you know, there's a number of other things that would need to make sure happen before we would bring that request forward.
Okay, thank you for the reminder. It's 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 something that that an entity or a group of landowners can essentially impose on themselves, but the governing body has to approve them to be able to do that, to add that. And assume I presume it'd be like a it'd be like a room night charge, something like that, like an extra fee on each hotel room?
Yep, that it would be, and they can only go up to the $2 amount that's currently established, and and we would follow codified law on what the bid could be used for for those improvements and what those dollars could actually go towards. But that would all be
Sure.
within an agreement that would ultimately be brought to City Council in the future.
And that's for another day when we get farther down the line and in the hotels coming to reality and everything. Okay, thank you for the reminder. Okay. If there's nothing else, we're going to open it up to public input. Anyone who wants to talk about anything we talked about for up to five minutes, welcome to come forward. Seeing nobody rushing up, this meeting is adjourned. Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. Thank you for the reminder so we don't accidentally get in trouble. Thank you. Well, so with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.